Welcome into the Pawtucket School Committee Special Budget Workshop on Monday, April 29, 2024 at 6:03 PM. Ms. List, please take a roll call.
Hello, Mr. Shalal. Ms. Doobie?
Yeah.
Ms. Grant? Mr. Chavino?
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have one member signed up for public participation, Robert Cardenti. Mr. Cardenti.
You can go right to the, there you go. My name is Bob Cardenti. I'm a retired Pawtucket Police Detective. Did 20 years in the city of Pawtucket, seven more years as an investigator with the state police, child crimes and digital forensics, and thank God I'm all done with all of that. Was a school resource officer at Tolman High School, the first one there until about 2014. And I'm now working for a security company as a consultant for doors and hardware. So I wanted to come out and speak with some of you individuals who I don't know, just introduce myself. If it's permissible, I'll leave some contact information. I work for a company that is a representative for all the doors and hardware in the schools. We provide free training, security assessments, repairs for products, all sorts of things. Basically, my job is just a resource. I don't sell anything. I just try to make your lives easier. If it's allowed, I will show you just one quick product of an example that we can, you could maybe utilize and consider down the road, and if so, you could contact me and I could put you in touch with somebody. Okay, perfect. Something as simple as this, the red button lock, right? In the event of a potential threat or some type of security situation where you had to lock the door, trying to utilize a key under stress is very difficult. Need to lock this door, you push that button. That's simple. Kids need to get out in a hurry, completely fire compliant. First responders do have the ability or school personnel to get into the building. Turn the key after the bolt is out. Door opens, that easy. So that's just one example of some of the products that Assa Abloy has. I know every school in Pawtucket, and I say it so humbly, all the products are already in here. So if there's an issue with products or any, anything I can help you with, you're certainly welcome to contact me. I'm still trying to, trying to do something to help people and make their lives easier. So appreciate your time. Thank you. All right, cool. I do, and I wasn't, I spent a long time selling. Jail time to people, so I don't do sales anymore. If you ask me, I will give you a card. This is my cellphone number, like I'm completely vested, not a company I would join if I didn't believe in the integrity and their, their purpose. Right? That's, Mr. Preet knows me, I'm a purpose-driven person. So if I could give you one of those and you wanted to pass them down, you're welcome to call me for anything. Doesn't have to be this either. I will definitely help you. Pawtucket's been good to me over the 20 years. Mr. Lancelotti, how are you, sir? Yeah, I, I am, I couldn't do the, the police stuff anymore, too much heavy, heavy lifting. But I just feel a desire to help people, so, you know. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move to new business discussion action items, FY '25 budget superintendent.
Good evening. So today we're going to present our budget for the '24-'25 school year, proposed budget. I have partner in this work with Markham Consulting Firm, and it has been an awesome but very busy experience, to say the least. They have come aboard, they've only been with us, tomorrow will be two weeks, so we haven't even worked together for two weeks. And we have a proposed budget. So today I have David that will be joining me, Jim. Still coming, Jim, oh, Jim, there you go, thank you. Okay, and Jim is here as well to present. We will start with the PowerPoint with some information, followed up with our high-level budget overview, and we can start from there. So we have David, say it right. There it, yes. There y'all, and Jim though. There y'all. Thank you.
All right, so first I just want to thank Ms. Royal and all the team members that helped us put this budget together. As you're aware, we just started work on this two weeks tomorrow, so it's been quite a challenge putting this together. And we couldn't have done it without their assistance, obviously, and everybody was definitely cooperative. And they all knew what they had to do to get this all put together for, for tonight's presentation. So definitely much, much kudos to Ms. Royal and, and her team. They worked out very, very well, helping us out. As far as the budget process, thanks, Mark. Mark is playing with the screen over there. So a lot of what we're going to see tonight is based on templates from the prior CFO, Melissa. And she was great, too. She was assisting a lot with questions and, and helping us out, getting things ironed out for, for tonight's meeting as well.
Let me just add, Melissa Devine has been an awesome asset. She worked with us most of day Saturdays, so she's been with us throughout this process round the clock. Everything that you see, she presented and given to us, so that we can keep the same formatting and the same process in place as previous years.
So it's been, what, the past two weeks, we actually went through the, the first two bullet points there, as far as evaluating all the needs and the programs and running through all the department program costs right across the board. So the biggest key, though, to this budget, getting it together, was actually looking at all the payroll, the personnel. Obviously, that's a big part of the budget. And obviously, this is just the, the first step in getting this finalized. I think you went through three rounds last year before it was finally approved, I think in August of '23, or '24, sorry. So one of the key things, too, in regards to this budget, you'll notice when we go through the budget itself, there's not going to be any actual figures, it's just going to be three columns. One for the budget last year that was approved. The second column is going to be for the current year request, and then the variance between the two. And to explain, basically, we're still waiting for the audit to be done for, completed for year '23, so that we can post the audit adjustments and be able to give you up-to-date actuals for '23. And '24 is still being worked on to get put together, and that's where Gail is going to step in. Gail just started today. For everybody that doesn't know Gail, he's going to be very instrumental starting tomorrow. So we definitely welcome Gail to the team. All right, so next screen. So funding sources, the state, we actually had an increase in state aid this year of a million, just over a million fifty thousand, which is great. Last year, I think it had a decrease in state, state aid. And basically, we have some impacts on education where the biggest critical impact, I think, is ESAR, sunsetting in, in the fall of this year. And a lot of communities, not just Pawtucket, are going to have issues with, with that lack of funding going into the fiscal year '25. So it's not just Pawtucket, believe me. Next slide, please. Okay, and then for the categorization, 73% of the budget will be funded by state aid. We're asking the city of Pawtucket for 34 million, or I'm sorry, 35.7, which is just under 25% of the total budget. And we've got some miscellaneous revenue projections, just under 2%. The biggest part of that is Medicaid reimbursements, which is almost half of that. And if anybody has any question during the presentation, by all means, raise your hand. If I don't see you, just give a shout out. Okay, so.
The amount of city aid, is that what has been allocated to us? It's not, we're not requesting an increase from them, or are we?
No, there is an increase this year. It's just under $3 million in the, in the request from the city.
Okay, thank you.
So, next slide. So the biggest key, like I said earlier, that we went through doing this budget, preparing the budget, was actually looking at the salaries from last fiscal year. And we came across 74.4 full-time equivalents that no longer worked here, or they were baking in last year's budget. And what we did, we went through the payroll, current payroll, and we were able to match out new hires against some of the turnover. And after we went through all that exercise, which was a big majority of the last two weeks to go through, as you can imagine, we came out with 5.4 positions that Ms. Royal believed we didn't need within the administration for the fiscal year 2025. And those five positions account for roughly a $300,000 savings in salaries. Off the top of my head, those five positions, there was a staff accountant, a tech analyst. There were two clerks, one was in travel, one was in special education. And 1.4 was in HR, so there's two clerks in HR, and that should be 5.4. So the salaries, just from the contractual obligations, you know, the 3% and the steps, actually accounted for a $3 million increase in salaries in this budget, which obviously is the biggest increase in the budget. The health and dental insurance has a $780,000 increase. There's a caveat with that, though. There was a, there's a medical insurance reserve fund that just got started last year. And from what I understand, there's a $500,000 transfer that we're taking from that reserve fund and putting it into the general funds budget this year. So the increase of 780 would have actually been $500,000 higher. And then the last two points, the pension contributions, those are all factual just based on the, the salaries of the current employees that are in the fiscal year '25 budget for the pension and the FICO taxes. And the last point, we won't know the workers' comp insurance. We tried to get a quote from the broker, but they won't give us a quote until mid-May for the July 1st fiscal year beginning. So we put in a, approximately a 5% budgeted increase for the premiums as opposed to last year, which accounted for $27,000 bump from last year's budget. Any questions, comments? On the next slide, well, there was a slide, was there a slide before that? Was that the next one, Mark? Okay.
I have a question. Did you include breakage in that?
Yep, the breakage is all included within that $3 million increase.
And the $500,000 from the medical reserve, we haven't done that before, have we?
Well, I believe the reserve, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that reserve fund was actually set up last year from some of the documentation that I saw. I could be wrong, but that's my impression.
Right, so the medical reserve balance, June 30th of 2024 balance was 3.5 million. So Melissa says that we had an increase of 4.67% in, okay, in, in health benefits, and then it went down dental. I can't remember the decrease in dental. So Melissa said that we need to offset that for our employees, so we're going to transfer the $500,000 from the, from the reserve account to offset the pay for the employees.
Okay, thank you.
And the last slide is the investment that are being put into play for all the different school programs. I don't think any of these are a surprise. Correct me if I'm wrong, these were put up here just to let you get an idea of what the new construction projects are. So basically, you have Baldwin, the Unified High School, which I believe is going to happen right across the street in McCoy Fields. But that's going to be a multi-year project where the fall of '29 is the expected opening date for that school. And then you get some handicapped accessible playgrounds that should be open this summer '24. And you've got some roof repairs within four or five different school facilities now.
I don't see the golf windows on there. Is that something that we've already allocated the money for? I know the windows are sitting there already, but we haven't installed them, so do we still have that as a lingering?
Still on, we didn't list everything, but yes, golf windows deal moving forward.
Okay, and is that out of general or ESAR funds?
Golf windows is ESAR.
Oh, okay, so is these, these items listed here, are they listed here? Sorry, are they listed here because they are intended to in some way affect our general budget? Or are any of these, I'm looking at the playgrounds, are any of these being funded out of ESAR?
So they're listed, most of them are coming out of the bond money, and.
Yeah, those won't be funded out of the general fund. Those will be funded out of a, a special side fund. We haven't, none of those are included in the actual operating budget.
Okay, so all of these are capital reserves or bond?
So Shay and Tolman was originally supposed to be the $20 million bond.
Yes.
And that was, we had to pivot from that. So now what we have to do is reallocate some of the funds that we had in our capital reserve to now go towards the bond projects. So say, for example, Varia, the roof replacements, we're going to put that in the bond. So now we can use the capital reserve to do the work that is needed for our students to be safe, dry placed at Shay and Tolman for the next five years. So we're using that capital reserve fund to do that with.
So is that the last line listed here?
So.
The capital, I'm sorry, on this, on this form, it says capital transfers out. On expenses, the final item says.
Yes, and you see, we, this estimate, but not total yet because we're still waiting on our reimbursement. So right now, today, I could give you this today.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
So it's up, right, because as you know, we're playing catch-up, basically. So Irma is still putting in our revenue for capital reserve. So right as of now, she is submitting to the city as of tomorrow, 17 million, 17.3 million to come back to us.
In the capital reserve?
Yes.
Okay, so we're confident that all of these, so although, though these are, are part of the general budget presentation, these are not listed here. Okay, that, that's what I'm trying to.
Right, that's why he prefaced the conversation with, this is pretty much against me because we don't have everything uploaded because of our situation, we're not having a finance department. So in addition to that, we're still adding and making adjustments. Once the final audit is finalized, it's going to be an adjustment as well.
Okay.
Then we have solid numbers to work from.
Okay, thank you.
So, some of the other things, I know about the playgrounds, those are covered. But we also have Varia and, no, not, yeah, the sound. For Varia and Baldwin. The annex. And Slater. So are those being included in this? They're not done, they, they.
They ordered them.
They ordered them, but then the company that they ordered them from never got back to us. So they've been in limbo since, so I want to make sure that the money is still there so we can put sound absorption boards in these.
I think that was actually slated to come out of, I, I think we ended up landing where that was coming out of capital. And then there was the issue where they raised the price $9,000 because we didn't get the order in time.
Right.
And then it kind of.
And then they dropped us.
Right, right. Yeah, I believe it's in capital.
Okay. And any other little projects that we have going on?
Shift, I'm sorry, shifted to bond.
Shifted to bond?
Shifted to bond. Go ahead, Ms. Grant.
So we keep referring to this $20 million bond. Do we have this $20 million bond? Or are we still waiting to get, like, has it been approved? Is it, is it been applied for? Is it all set?
So it's got 220 million, which is also referred to as the 234. So it's the same bond that we've been working from for quite a while. It's really the, the approval, the 234 approval. And under the 234 approval was the original 45 million for Shay, 45, 47 million for Tolman. And it was also for Winters and Balla Wind. So that's the approval. Originally, we, because we have Pago home, we never, and the original bond was pulled, 41 million, I believe. I'm doing very wrong numbers, folks, I apologize. 41 million for the Winters project, but we had Pago, so we, they never pulled it. So we're going after the next round of the bond pull, which is 80 million right now. And the whole purpose of the 80 million is to cover some of the capital projects that we can get reimbursed. So these are reimbursable capital projects, reimbursable bond projects under the 234 approval, which is what you just saw there, but moving them out of capital because what we can't do in the bond is any repairs to Shay and Tolman. So we needed to loosen up and make some room in the capital so we can actually do the, the repairs that we want to do to Shay.
So I guess, back to my original question, is the money for all these projects and all these bonds? I know when we had that meeting at the city council, they had said that they were going up for ban and then for bond. Have we gotten any updates?
So they're at the second point in the ride back, they went up for 80 million. And they were in this, they have to go back for the second round for a ride back for the 80 million. That's expected in late August, maybe early September. So in the interim, they're going up for a ban, a $45 million ban at this point. And we should have that very early May. So the ban is against the bond, and as soon as the bond comes through, the ban will be tabled.
So the ban has been approved, and we're going to have access to those funds in May?
Yes, we've been working with Mark and the city, and we've already submitted, and Ride, we've already submitted the ban documents and also the bond documents. They're looking for a couple of clarifiers, they got that on Friday. They want one more piece of clarifying information, but the ban is, is pretty much all set.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Penolo.
About more detail, when we can get more detail.
Yeah, absolutely. Specifically, I, I think we can certainly have whatever form the budget exists electronically sent out to the committee. Is there, I mean, I, I think the summary sheet identifies the, the, you know, 99% of the budget, but is there something specific that you want to discuss specifics on now that?
Teachers, TAs, our custodial staff, are we maintaining the size that we have? Are we increasing? Are we decreasing? Those are important questions because we've been running short teachers all year long. And that's not good for our students, so I need to know where we're going with it, and if we are covering that in the budget.
When you say short teachers, I think you're talking about vacancies or the, yes, that, but did I take any positions out? This is as is. With everyone staying put, except, with the exception of the ESAR, people that were in ESAR, we had that meeting, Ron and Crystal handled that side of the house. But when we do our staffing process, they'll do the regular staffing process they do normally all year. Looking at our current data, I did not exclude anyone, I didn't take anyone out of the school or anything like that. This is as is, with everyone receiving their pay increase. Because I, we need to keep who we have, our teachers.
Mr. Shalal, then Ms. Grant.
Thank you very much for that. First, I want to say thank you for the hard work everyone did to put on a piece of paper because, Chairman, as you know, we've been, and Superintendent, you alluded to it, without having a CFO for as long as we did, I, I really give you guys a lot of credit. Can we get a little more into the weeds on two items I see as, as, we, we went down two point, we're going, paper's in front of me. We're, we're going down 2.4 million in special education. Any, an explanation on that?
Yes. Yeah, so, so as you all familiar know, we, as a result of our school safety committee that has been meeting with Lisa and Lee, one thing that came out is that we all, we, we, I'm included, feel that we need an alternative aid program. RIAA, who mostly, we pay like 82 seats for our students to attend, was somewhere around $2.6 million we were paying for them to provide services to our students. As of now, I don't even think we maxed out to the 82 seats as we speak. So, the owner of RIAA made a deal, great deal, I mean, I understand, has now moved away from Pawtucket, and now will be servicing students in Warwick. We, we still have a working relationship, he said, Ms. Well, you know, if you still need to send kids over this way, feel more than free. And I was like, okay, let me look at a cost analysis and see and price that up because it's a lot of money that we're spending out front every year. So we did, and as a result, Mark did a lot of work with this in his team, Dot Takes team, looking at the cost per student. If we open our own program, even with leasing the building, because he's evacuating that building, what would the cost savings be? So what you're looking at is the cost saving from what we pay RIAA in us starting our new program next year. The safety committee has already started initiating planning for what that will look like for next year for our students. And our goal is that we want to provide students with the services that they need so that they can return back to their school with additional skills and strategies so that they can graduate successfully and be ready for society. So that's where we landed. I kind of knew we were going to have a cost saving, I was very excited to see that cost savings. But it also lends itself to, if you go down to the next line, you may see an increase in salaries, but that's because we have to house teachers there to provide the services, but it all kind of like plays out.
So the teachers are the, that, they're not part of the reduction then? We're not eliminating special education teachers, terrific, so that's actually an increase?
Correct.
Student support services will actually be teachers?
Correct.
Classroom, people are inside the classroom with teach, uh, students.
And I met with the president, Mr. Ron Boprey, hey, Ron. Where we discussed doing some MOA so we can hire the best teachers for, because we were talking about students who really need special needs, that they have special needs, need special attention, and, you know, some, some strategies outside of the normal school environment. So he agreed, and the committee agreed, that we should look at hiring the best personnel for that, for that place to provide those services and programs. I also reached out to Ride, there's no change for anything because he was servicing our kids anyway. So everything pretty much stays the same.
Where, where are they going to be with?
In this, where RIAA was located, behind Tolman.
Oh, by, okay, no.
Same place.
All right. My other line item that caught my eye was out of district, out of district tuition. Can you give some background to that? What, what is that, that there's a reduction to it? Is it, is it?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but.
This school?
There's, there.
Is it Jack?
There's, there, not as many kids are exiting our school as much as previously.
Okay.
So we're starting to re- retain some of our students.
Okay.
Which is making a difference because our teachers are making a difference, so it's making a difference. So next year, hopefully, we'll be even less than that.
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Grant?
My question is, under special education, what does that entail? Um, does that include preschool? Um, is preschool fall under that? And if so, as the next wave of students come in and as we move towards more and more with, um, students going full day, um, do we have enough space in our district, um, for the preschool students? Um, because it does seem like we have been maxing out, um, very early, um, in every year. And, um, and I'm just wondering if, how that is taken into consideration in regards to that particular budget?
Yes, so some students are special education students, that's in our pre-K program. And, uh, Mark, and wrote a waiver to ride so that we can open up two new classrooms for pre-K full-time. And we had to get a waiver and we were finally approved to make space, like you said, you're right. We were running out of space to service our students. Uh, we also provide after-school services for those families as well. If they need, you know, like speech for an hour, they could come and be serviced as well. So we did both programs, um, simultaneously to service our kids better. Next year, we're looking at additional space, if possible, to house additional pre-K because our pre-K population of students is growing rapidly across the state. Um, it's a good thing, but we just gotta retrofit to meet those needs of our families. So you're right.
So do we have all that figured in for the next year?
Yes.
In this with going down, um, going down two point five million?
Yes, so the special education, special education students are coded, special education in the system to account for the funding. And then our regular ed kids, because you know, we have those pre-K programs. We have half students that are regular ed and half students that are special needs students. So we, um, account for both, but even fall in different buckets, but they are accounted for on this summary.
So in regards to the pre-K program that's run by the city of Pawtucket, where there's both special needs and typical students, budget-wise, that is split.
Mm-hmm.
That's what you're saying, so.
Yes.
So my other question is, where are we finding two more pre-K rooms in the district?
Uh, I wanna say Varia? Varia? Varia.
Okay, and.
And where?
Green.
And green.
And we have, um, the capability to pay for, um, because I know a lot of kids might be, um, coded as typical, but they might have a speech ailment or something like that. We'll have enough to provide all these services and not having teachers and therapists running from school to school. I know right now, we only have one, one, um, um, physical education teacher for the students who actually goes to every school in the district. It just seems like that might be something we should consider, maybe hiring another one. Um, because, um, it's not really fair, you know? Um, but, um, okay, so all that has been taken into consideration in this?
Yeah.
I, I have to be honest, it would be really nice to, to have breakdowns, to kinda see, um, because everything is so expensive. And I know in the past, we have had, you know, some breakdowns and things like that. And it just seems like it's just very bucketed. And it's not, um, broken down as much as I feel like we've been used to it in the past. Um, but.
Ms. Panolo?
Um, have you looked anything at an alternative learning academy for our older children? That need?
That, yeah, that's what, um, Jim just asked me about.
That's the RIAA?
That's the program.
And they go through all grades, what grades?
It'll be secondary.
Okay.
And, and where, Ms. Doobie?
I was gonna ask, so we have two passages of this, correct? So we have a, it's like policy where we have a first passage, then it'd be brought back to us for a second passage? Okay.
And I, I anticipate it, it may be brought back to us after the city has a chance to review. And whatever it is that they, they choose to do, it may come back to us again. Th- this is the first draft of what is going to be submitted tomorrow morning to the city council and the mayor's office.
Thank you. So can I just clarify, um, a few, um, overarching themes I'm hearing? Um, the first being that we're essentially maintaining, um, the same staffing in our teachers in moving forward. That the primary, um, savings that we have in the overall budget is, um, around this idea of building an in-house alternative program similar to what, I mean, I'm not gonna say similar to, but in, in some vein like the PLA or, um, that we used to have as opposed to having our students sent out of district, essentially. That that's the primary savings that we're seeing with this large number of a decrease. Um, and that the primary increase is due to we've negotiated a new contract and we have, you know, increase in salaries as a result to reward the people who um, work in our district. Um, and am I correct that that's basically the overarching, what we see here?
That's correct.
Ms. Panolo?
Are we maintaining status quo with assistant principals throughout the schools?
Um, yes. I did not cut any positions I currently have, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
Is, yeah, are all our assistant principals covered under local or are they still covered under ESER?
Uh, local.
Local, all right.
There was, there was one that was still in ESER, um, that is currently a vacancy, so.
So this budget reflects all assistant principals covered under local?
Right, okay.
Else on the budget? Motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget by Ms. Doobie, seconded by Mr. Shalal. Discussion. Ms. Grant?
We keep saying over and over that, um, the, um, the audit hasn't been done or completed yet for twenty twenty-three. So how does that play into this?
Yeah, well, it, it kinda gives you a foundation because obviously, we don't know, um, how the budget played out last year compared to actuals of this year. Um, so if we had the twenty-three figures in there, um, you'd be able to see what was actually spent back in twenty-three. And it would give you more of, um, an inclination for budgeted figures. So if there was an actual, eh, um, salary of like a million dollars in one department, for example, and all of a sudden, you're seeing only nine hundred thousand, be like, okay, why did that happen? Um, but we're going off of budgeted last year. Um, and there were no new hires or only replacements. Um, so we can kinda be rest assured that there are no new positions. Uh, they were just all replacements of people that were leaving.
What makes me nervous about, um, approving this actual draft um, is that we don't have any of those hard numbers yet. I know there's, you know, we'll come back for a second and then people will retire and this and that. But we don't even have the numbers from the audit last year.
Yeah, but I mean, unfortunately, with two weeks worth of time, um, this is what we, um, came up with, believe me, it was a lot of work to put this together as is. Um, and we just didn't have the resources to be able to get the audited. And we don't even have the audit, um, adjustments from the accountant shit, um, that prepared the audit. Um, so believe me, it was a big ask to get to where you are right now.
Yeah, and, and I totally, I, I totally appreciate it. Um, um, all the hard work, but, but I know that things have gotten very expensive. And having a special needs child myself, I know that when these children come into the district, um, all the new students, um, and then the other students, um, who have equipment are gonna need more. And we should be providing more and costs have gone up. It would kinda be nice to kinda be able to see a, a little bit more, you know? Um, you know, to see actually how much was spent in special ed, ed last year. Um, if it did go over budget.
The department heads do have to abide by their budgets. Um, so by having the twenty-three, twenty-four budget to kind of follow for this fiscal year, um, you know, you've got a, a foundation there to be able to build upon.
Ms. Panolo?
How long will it take to get a more detailed, um, budget analysis?
When you say more detail, I'm kinda scratching my head because we use the same templates, um, as last year that were provided. So is there something different from what you got last year versus?
We had backup, we had.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt you, Ms. Panolo, but I, I, I think the issue is, is they can't put together a full budget without having the finalized audit of last year to list those finalized figures in the budget for comparison purposes of, this is, this was what was FY twenty-three, twenty-four budgeted. This was the actual spend, here's FY twenty-four, twenty-five's new budget, and here's the, here's the variant. Without that, it's, that's, that's the challenge of getting you the completed budget to flip through line by line by line by line. Um, but we've completed our portion of that. And our portion of that's been completed for quite some time. So we're waiting on the city to finalize whatever it is they need to finalize. Um, and in the meantime, they're requesting a draft budget from us. So I, I, I think the work that's been done over the last two weeks is, is nothing short of remarkable. Having been through numerous budget before, um, I think, you know, I recognize we all got it this afternoon, you know? Um, but to have it, to be able to, to discuss and, and potentially send to the council tomorrow, I think is remarkable. And, you know, yeah, it's, listen, it's, it's a big ask of the city at two point nine million dollars. But you know what? We're four years, we've been level funded. And, and to Ms. Grant's point, everything's gone up. And, and we have contractual obligations just like they do, so. But that's my, that's, once the audit's finalized and those numbers can be transposed into a full, complete budget, then I anticipate we'll get it sent to us. In the meantime, Superintendent will send us the PowerPoint and any other documents they may have. Ms. Grant?
Um, do we have a plan for this, um, I guess PLA, I'll call it the PLA? Like, do we have, um, people in place? Do we have a director? Do we know how many teachers we're gonna need? Um, do, is there any chance that we wouldn't be able to staff this where we would have to turn around and either place these students back in the regular population or send them to Warwick?
No, so they are included into these figures, the staff that is needed.
About the, I, but are we gonna be able to staff it?
Well, that's, yeah.
That, that's.
That's the same question, right. So that'd be the same question for all my positions.
Exactly.
Correct, so if anything, we're still looking for teachers. And this is ideal because remember, we talked about the ESER ending this, this year. There are a lot of districts that put positions in ESER, way more than what we have. Those people are looking for jobs. So if any other time, this is kinda perfect timing because it's gonna be a lot of positions that have to come out of ESER, people still need jobs, so this is the prime time to do this program. Next summer, I probably would not be able to say that, but this summer would, is a prime time to get this opening going.
I understand that, but these particular students aren't your everyday students. These are students who have behavioral problems, mental health issues. So, so we don't just want everyday, ordinary teachers. We're gonna need certain kinds of support, we're gonna need to. So I, I just wanna make sure that, you know, those are, that we're gonna be able to staff this appropriately so that these students are able to get what they need. And that if we are gonna need an alternative for it, are we prepared to do that? If, if we don't have the proper mental health support in, in things like that?
Yes, definitely. And I've supervised alternative schools before, um, very familiar with the structure. Um, very familiar with what the expectations are and what's needed to run a successful alternative ed program. So I've done it for years, so, yes, would not be my first rodeo.
Just have one more question, um, I don't know who can answer. When, when are we up for our first student contract? Um, do we, are, is, is the entire next year covered under the current contract we have? That, that's what I was one, and I, but I, doesn't that, does it run out in February or?
No, February, come December.
Okay, but the entire year will be covered under the contract? Because I, I know that I've heard rumblings that that might also be a big increase possibly.
There is an, um, based on, so.
Yeah.
Three-year contract, two-year optional extension.
Yeah.
To begin with, one of the optional extension years, and there was an increase to that.
Yeah.
Um, but then we'll probably have to go out to bid for next year.
But this is a known number that we have? Okay, thank you.
Anything else on the budget? Been a motion to approve, it's been seconded, there being no further discussion. Roll call on the approval of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget first passage?
Ms. Panola? Mr. Shalal?
Yes.
Ms. Doobie?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Shabano?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Motion adjourned by Ms. Doobie, seconded by Mr. Shalal. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Good night, everyone.